June 1, 2020.
Okay, is there, are there any corrections or anything anyone has to add or change? If not, I would pass a roll call on the, on the vote.
This is Phil, I say aye.
Okay.
Mary, I say aye.
Curtis, aye.
Martha must be aye.
I didn't hear a second, actually, on Mary's.
Oh, you're right, right.
I'll second the motion, this is Phil.
I will once again vote aye.
Aye, okay, I think we're good. Five ayes, okay. Dave, do you have anything, or does anyone have any adjustments to this agenda?
Gordon, this is where in the past we have accepted the warrants.
Okay, we can do that, okay. I went through them earlier today. Somebody any comments about that?
I do have a question, what was the, on page three of four of accounts payable, the accident at Rec for $1,100?
That was my question, too.
Yeah, what was that all about?
That was a, one employee backing into the other.
Oh.
Van backed into John Leonard's car. And the, the deductible was $1,000, so we decided it was like an $1,100 fix, so we decided just to, to pay directly.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Another question I had, Dave, was about the Stetl Page and Fletcher. What matter was that for?
That is mostly from legal activity relating to a court, to a, what's the word, I'm looking, I want to say grievance, but towards an appeal on a tax assessment.
The one that was dropped last meeting?
Yep, and that's actually two invoices combined into one.
Awesome.
Dave, this is Phil, just to clarify, the $48,000 and then change for Pike Industries, their Quechy Road paving?
Yes, the $48,000, you said?
$48,000, yeah.
Yep.
So will it be possible at some point in time, once we have all the invoices, and to get a summary, a total on the paving for that project?
So that's the total.
Oh, that's the entire total for that, half a mile is $48,000.
Yep, the estimate was $50,000, so it came in just a little bit under the 50 grand.
Okay, so that, I, just, just as a small note, and correct me if I'm wrong, Phil or Gordon, but I think that's pretty substantially under the roads plan estimate per mile for paving, is that right?
It's under the estimate for, for reclaiming the whole road. This was not reclaiming, taking up the asphalt, this is just a layer on top.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion for accepting the warrants as presented.
Mary wants to do it, but we can't hear her.
I'm on mute, I'm on mute. I make a motion that we accept the accounts payable warrants as presented.
Curtis will second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Phil, aye.
Mary, aye. Martha, aye.
Gordon, aye, okay, very good. So now, now we're going to take a few minutes, like five minutes or so, for any public comments that anyone wants to bring up. Bear in mind here that we've got an hour set aside for the intersection discussion, at which time we can allow some public comment also, so maybe these comments could be something other than intersection comments.
Gordon, can I ask a question about that agenda item, actually? Will we also be talking about the proposal that I sent around earlier today at that time?
We can do that.
Okay, so then it might be, it might be important to note that during the discussion of the intersection, we will also talk about establishing forums whereby people can submit questions about the Three Corners Intersection project. So we're hoping to be able to create a centralized repository, so, but we'll get to that later at that time, I guess.
That's right, very good.
I have a question. New Transit scheduled to pave Route 5 from Windsor to Hartford last year, or it was supposed to start in April, I was wondering whether you have any update from them as to whether they're still proposing to do that, or whether that's been postponed temporarily or permanently?
I believe they're going to be paving that, I think they're going to be starting next week or the week after, and no, that project, that project's still a go.
They just painted the white line for Route 5, so it seems like a waste. Thank you.
John, they're going to repave, repave around those white lines, so.
That'll be tricky.
Any other public comments? Well, why don't we move along then? So Dave, we got, next thing is, on the old business, is the update on the COVID situation? Any discussion you have, or new information?
A little bit, I would just like to remind everybody that we do indeed still have COVID-19 around, we're still in pandemic out there, so we still are acting as such, at least internally here, even though it's easy to forget, as the headlines seem to indicate things opening as we go here, people out eating, et cetera, but we are still, if you follow the details, following the guidance, and just want to remind everybody, it's still there. That being said, last week, they did loosen some of the restrictions on recreation, allowing for some team activities, you know, mainly more of a non-contact sports, it's a soccer, lacrosse, baseball, therefore, we will be adding to the summer camp program, we'll be offering a baseball clinic, we will also be offering the RACAP basketball camp, however, we will be doing essentially drills with the camp, not necessarily, you know, competition-type games, again, unless that changes between now and the end of July. Again, summer camp is scheduled for June 22nd, and the last time I spoke to John, it was full, we did have a maximum capacity of 20 kids due to what we couldn't, couldn't do, and at this point, it is full. John also did receive a $4,400 grant, I don't believe that's part of your financial information for the end of May, but I believe it did come in, in June, and that's essentially money to go towards, you know, COVID-19-related activity or, or precautions, of which we do have and have started expending for such things as face masks, thermometers, rubber gloves, we need to utilize a pair of rubber gloves per individual student or child that comes in, so we're going to go through at least 20 gloves a day, so we had to stock up on that, so that grant will come in useful, and there's relatively few strings attached to that. Damon Hall, we continue to operate essentially as we have been, about two to three people per, per, per time, and also, I did put in your packets, the legislation, there is legislation, I believe, that's been passed that would allow the towns to change the date that you have tax collections, or, you know, ease the penalties or interest if so desired, we've talked a little bit about that in the past, traditionally, you need voter approval to change the date that you have collections, they've relaxed that, just know that that's hanging out, essentially, hanging out there, essentially. Really kind of it, Gordon?
Okay.
Hey, Dave, Gordon is still all right, if I go ahead?
Yes.
I, I agree with your opinion on that, about no need to change it right now.
Yeah, and actually, I would, as per the last discussion, I would really recommend we stay consistent and, you know, keep those dates the same, just based upon some of the issues and practices we've had in the past, I think just keeping it consistent will alleviate any further issues with that.
The way I read that, it's, it's going to sunset at the end of the year, anyway.
And also, we would still be, the town would still be on the hook for the deadline for school taxes, anyway, so that's not, and I will say that we're, from all the people I've talked, I've spoken with, social services, talking about their, the needs that they've had, there hasn't been a big uptick, either at the beginning of the crisis, or currently, there still isn't one, so we're keeping our tabs on that through the food shelf and mutual aid and all of that stuff, so if it starts to look like the people in Heartland are getting hit really hard by this economically, then we'll know pretty rapidly, I guess, so.
Dave, this is Phil, my question really was about the right education property tax, because as I read this, they decouple it from the municipal property tax, so do we have to have a mutual decision with the school board?
I, I don't believe they decouple it, we're responsible for putting out the billing and the collection on the school tax, and they want us to pay that, as Curtis pointed out, pay that school tax on time, the municipality always gets the short end of the stick, you know, if we have delinquencies, schools, schools still get their money, we come up short, so if I understand it right, they, it's, the process is still the same, if anything, they've streamlined it, not streamlined it, but kept it the same, and the dates that we have to pay that school money that, you know, is due to them, is set, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And we're still waiting to see if the state will give us the school tax rate on time, we had gotten notice that it may be as late as August 1st, it generally comes out July 1st, and then we set our school and, and town tax rate mid to third week in July, and it goes out at the end of July, early August, and we had been receiving some information that they may be as late as August 1st, almost kind of an at-best estimate, although Martin was telling me today that he heard that they were, at this point, they were hoping to get a July 1st tax rate out there, so. Yeah, we're, we don't win either way, you know, they, they send us the tax rate when they want, yet we still have to pay when, you know, dates are set, so I'll just leave it at that.
Well, Dave, what's, what's the deal about that they can't do it when there's, on time, what, what are the obstacles?
I, I believe one of the bigger obstacles is the July 15th new deadline for taxes, and the pre-bate plays a big portion of this, and it kind of, that's going to hinder their ability to calculate several things pertaining to this, that's one of the items. Revenues, the other big one is, obviously, the education fund is funded by other mechanisms other than just the property tax, I believe that the sales tax for rooms and meals is part of that, and that's really been deficient, so I don't think they really have an idea as to what the total amount in that pot is going to be, you know, until the year runs out, so I think they're kind of struggling coming up with, you know, there's been a real debate as to who's going to make up that deficiency, who's going to make up that shortfall in the education fund, if what the, the state puts into it to, to make that hole is short, whether it's going to be the towns, the state, you know, who's going to borrow for it, so I don't, I kind of lost track in the last week to 10 days on that discussion, I don't think it's been solved, but I know that all of that combined is creating an issue for them as to what they need to raise for the property, for the school tax rate, combined with, you know, the various budgets, and I think there's still, I think maybe a couple have had it, but the last I knew it was like 16 towns that still had an unsettled budget that hadn't been voted on due to the virus, so they still needed to kind of factor that in, so there's a bunch of issues that are kind of, you know, not giving them a clear set of numbers to work with as to far as what they need to come up with.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Dave, would this be a good time to just have a quick discussion on the tax sale issue, or the taxes? I know it's in your minute, in your manager's notes.
Um, I guess you just have to remind me where we are in the agenda, I'm not sure, I think we've kind of wandered off a little bit, I'm not sure it's on the agenda, so.
We were in, we were in the very first side of COVID, but we got from that into taxes because of people having a hard time to pay, potentially.
Um, so that was on a future agenda item.
Yeah.
Based upon, I have, you know, due to the work effort into the Three Corners Intersection vote, I have not started that process, but based upon some conversations that we have had at the select board level in circumstances like this, I was under the belief that this is something that we still wanted to move forward and do, so it was my intent that that was something that we were going to start the process on, it hasn't started, but I think that my opinion is, is that everybody on that list is either a repeat customer or had issues way before this started, I'm not sure that this has worsened or bettered their situation, but I don't see a benefit to prolonging it with the individuals that we have on their list, would be my, would be my feedback.
Okay.
We, we do get, we do get to a point where the select board needs to approve via motion to move forward with a tax sale, and that would be coming up, if not at the July 6 meeting, probably the July, I don't know what the date is after that, the 16th or 17th, somewhere in there, it would need to be at one of those meetings, so we can deal with it more formally at that point.
Okay. All right, well then, let's move along down the agenda to talk about the budget, just the budget update that you have on here, and, and my papers.
So I was hoping you were going to put that one off until after the hour-long discussion, because I.
We can do that.
I put a whole lot into it, but I can, I can go over that, let's do it, and then we'll, we'll dedicate the entire time to the Three Corners Intersection.
Okay.
I won't get too into it, other than it looks much like I have said the last month or two, I'll stick with the general fund, again, we, it's in my town manager update, we're probably about $189,000 delinquency at this point, just something to keep in the back of your head, but other than that, revenues on paper have come in greater than expected, I am backing out of that, the sale of the 21 house, if you look at the sale of the 21 house, it puts us over, you know, by $166,000, of course, on the expense side, when we turn around and take up the loan on that, I also took it off the expenses, so that we're looking apples to apples, just so that you know, otherwise, we're even better than, even better than that, by me taking that out. It's not on here, but what I have stated the last month or two, and Curtis asked specifically where I thought the revenue deficiency would come from due to the virus, and I mentioned the Rec Center and the loss of the summer camp revenue, we won't get the full revenue that we would have been expecting, but I do believe, you know, with the 20 kids, we'll close that gap in the month of June, which is a positive, plus we'll have the grant revenue coming in as well, so that kind of evens the Rec Center out a little bit, on the expense side, it's all looking pretty good, what is not in here, and a good chance, and we've been talking about this, that will, it will end up going into fiscal year 21, is the front steps that are to the Rec Center and Damon Hall, which is expected to start at the end of June, possibly early July, but hopefully the end of June, you know, that's a, a good expense, that if it's not in this year's budget, you know, is, will be money not spent, so that is helping this budget along, which also is why it is also looking pretty good, we do have money in there to deal with it next fiscal year, but just know that that is one of the differentials in the expense side, we should be roughly 92% expensed, at the moment, we're about 87% expensed, with about 100% of revenue coming in, again, we'll see some activity in June, this is through May, that's the general fund.
Can you answer a statutory question for me, real quick?
Yep.
How do we do budget, how do we hold over budget from year to year, what's allowed for that? So like Damon Hall, we had a line item for the Damon Hall stairs, we don't use it now, and we want to use it in a month, or whatever, after the budget is done, how does that work?
Um, it really, technically, it goes away almost until we do an audit, and then we determine, so at the end of the year, come June 30th, the year closes, okay, we either have a surplus, or we have a deficit, and really, it almost takes, you know, we truly don't close the books until the end of August with the governmental accounting, and that's when we true up the delinquent taxes, it becomes deferred revenue, and there's some other, other adjustments that are made, at that point, again, it's either a surplus or a deficit, and that essentially goes to the balance sheet, if we were a company, it would go to equity, where a governmental entity, it goes to fund balance, and then it becomes either a positive or a negative fund balance, we have hovered literally between a deficit and a surplus, depending on where our delinquent taxes fall, so for us, the decision isn't all that complicated, we usually kind of hang tight and see where we land, we may very well swing to a deficit, because I don't see a tax sale occurring before Labor Day, before that end of the August, you know, cutoff date, so our ability to, you know, we had a tax sale in August last year, so we really closed that gap and brought in a lot of that deferred revenue, and we kind of swung to a surplus, we may, again, indeed swing to a deficit, small one, if that's the case, we'll probably work with it, because it's not all that, you know, it kind of swings back and forth, and we'll go into next year, you know, when we budgeted for expenses, if we have a surplus, and it's a large enough surplus, or a continuous surplus, you essentially need to go back to the voters and say, you know, okay, what do you want to do with the surplus, you can put it in reserve account, you can pay down, you know, next year's tax rate, you know, there's various things that you can do with it, but at the moment, we're not, we're not there.
So I think my, my, more specifically, my question would be, given that you've signed a contract for the Damon Hall steps, but we don't anticipate that contract being executed until the close of the fiscal year, how can we pay that out, given that that wasn't a line item in the budget that was voted on for this year?
Well, I, actually, we, we, we have a capital expense, or a capital number of about $60,000, you know, we've got other things in the pipeline that I would like to address, you know, we may have to push that off due to the fact that we're now looking at next year's budget to, you know, work within that, you know, do that in, you know, we're going to get into the weeds here a little bit, you know, if, let's just say, all things were zero, you know, everything was working as it should, the budget ended exactly as we dictated, and the only difference was, is that we had a $35,000 surplus, because we didn't do the stairs, you could essentially deficit spend the following year and eat up that fund balance or equity, you know, it's kind of there, but, you know, again, once you get to a large enough surplus, you should really go to the voters and, you know, ask them if that's what they'd like to do.
Okay.
You know, at the moment, you know, I, you know, we, it's tough to tell where we'll end up, we usually wait for the auditor to come in and pick up for those final audit and numbers, which is usually in the late or early winter, but otherwise, we do have money earmarked for capital project expenses, of which this was.
Thanks for the conversation.
Dave, this is Phil, I know we don't want to spend too much time on this, but two questions on the pilot program, one, what is the property that is generating the funds from the pilot program, and second, there's a jump of $20,000 there, which is crazy.
Yep, we talked about this last meeting, the pilot money is essentially from the North Heartland Dam, and they are on kind of a contract, you know, it's not your typical property tax revenue, it got put under the pilot, you know, pilots generally, money from the state for state buildings that are on town property, but, you know, this is kind of where this has been, the, it's actually, we goofed, kind of in our favor, you know, we put down $1,500 as a budgeted revenue number, it was intended to be $15,000, we get that, and I tend to budget conservatively, we come up with that $15,000 number, simply because by contract, the minimum number or amount that we can expect from the North Heartland Dam is $15,000, we have received as little as, you know, the low 20s, we've received as high as in the 40s, it's difficult to know what that number's going to be, is, you know, kind of dependent on what they generate, it's kind of a complex formula, so without knowing a definitive number, rather than, you know, guessing like 30, we go conservative and say, okay, we know we won't get anything less than $15,000, so we budget $15,000.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Dave, this is relatively small, and I feel like we may have gone over it, so maybe just refresh my memory, the water bills for the Rec Center and the Activity Center, why are they 215% each?
Uh, because we, there's a new fangled testing that the state has come up with, I think it's for the PCO, I'm going to get it wrong, PSOAs or something to that effect, they came out with a new fangled thing that we now test both of the daycares for, including the Rec Center, so that is a rather expensive test, Mike, can't remember Mike's last name at the moment, over at the school, does the testing for us, which is nice, but the test for these particular things that came down the pike is, is actually kind of pricey.
Okay.
Highway, I'll just get into. Highway, I'll just get into quick. Highway is kind of a little bit more difficult to pinpoint because we have had such, you know, grant and FEMA activity the last two years. As you can see, we've had revenue come in, 30, 44, almost 70 grand in grants. Some of that, where a lot of that pertains to last fiscal year. We had by design built into this budget to utilize $45,000 in surplus to offset expenses. I don't believe we're going to need to use that. Actually, I know we won't need to use that. And even with the $50,000 Queachey Road expense that we were really planning on doing next fiscal year, we're still showing, I would say, a $50,000 surplus or just that we have underexpensed. So, you know, the whole plan was is we kind of overexpensed last year because we did paving county road essentially two years' worth in May simply because they were available and ready to go. And we were going to kind of hold off this year and then do it next year, and that was going to kind of even things out and fill the surplus and the highway fund back up. But we did Queachey Road. They were available. We did it. So it throws a little bit of a monkey wrench into that, but it's really, at the end of next June 30th, it should, we should still end up in the same place. So I think that that is, you know, the highway funds or highway department or highway fund, to be specific, also is looking as it should, even though we overexpensed on salt and a couple other items last winter.
Any other questions, Dave? Oh, that's, okay, then. Let's call it good. Study that some more on our own, I guess. Okay, so we move on. Want to do, Dave, are you anxious to do the intersection?
Why don't we take care of the new planning commission members, of which you have three, John Bruno, Kate Donahue, who just entered the meeting, if she's still with us, and Wes Johnson. Jay, are you with us? Thought I might have seen him earlier. I don't see anyone attached to that name. I can, ballots for Jay in the process, but we have two of the three here that are wishing to be planning commission members. We had a couple, we had one opening at the time because the planning commission had kind of went from a nine to a seven member commission just based upon the fact that they weren't getting people interested. We put it out a couple of times on the listserv and word of mouth that we were looking for a planning commission member. Four actually responded. One got picked up by the.
Dave, we can't understand what you're saying.
Dave, we lost your voice.
Reset the router.
No Comcast system. Hold on now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you?
Sort of.
Hear me now?
In and out.
Can you hear me? In and out. Well, that's something new.
That's in and out.
How about now?
Well, the screen is frozen too, Dave. Can't hear you at all.
Well, what, I can pick up, or Phil can pick up from the actual meeting. So they had, they were down to seven member commission, and they had one opening, and then they heard from all three of the people who had applied to be on the planning commission, and they were actually really excited about all of them and were happy to expand the commission out and get some new ideas and some fresh blood into the commission, as it were. And so I think that according to the memo that we got, all three of them, Wes Johnson, Kate Donahue, and John Bruno have agreed to serve on the commission, and they have been voted on to the commission by its current membership.
That sounded good, Curtis.
Now we can, now everything's better, Dave.
How's that?
Yeah.
I plugged in direct. So let me just get my chair and my notes.
Gordon, I was wondering if Kate or John wanted to say anything? Yeah, it's a good idea. I know, I think they're both here. I don't know about Wes. Kate, are you?
Hello, I'm Kate Donahue.
I can see you and hear you.
Yes, I'll be excited to serve on the planning commission if it were voted upon by the select board. I look forward to learning more and also helping to contribute to the town.
Sounds good. Thanks, Kate.
John Bruno, yeah, I'm happy to serve and offer whatever input or expertise that I have to.
Thank you, John.
I'm excited to have a fellow anthropologist on one of the boards in town. Kate is an anthropologist, so.
Not too many of us.
There are not too many of us, right? And John, I was very intrigued to see your name attached to the year 1993 to 94 for the Three Corners Intersection Project.
So Gordon, do you need a motion?
We do, we do. I was wondering if Wes is, Wes is around. Is Wes?
I don't see Wes's name on the, on the list.
So Phil, would you like to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we accept Wes Johnson, Kate Donahue, and John Bruno as members of the planning commission. I'm not sure if there are terms involved, so.
Um, there are terms. This word J would be good. So two would be picked up as a three, and there's one. If you hold that thought. Phil, I would just say to their designated terms, and then we can maybe fill in the gap next meeting officially, so I can get that information from Jay.
Okay. Martha, I'm not sure where I'm at, so can you add that first?
Yes, I have, Phil made a motion to accept these three as members of the planning commission.
I think we have to say appoint.
Oh, appoint.
Yeah. Phil said the wrong word.
Yeah, and terms to be, current length of term to be determined.
Or, I know the, I know the commission, the commission knew what the terms are. As Dave was saying, two of them are the same term, and then one of them is a shorter term. So maybe as, as, as determined or whatever you said, Dave.
Yep. I'll fill in the gap for you next meeting.
Motion by committee.
Can we have a second?
Go ahead, second. Mary can.
We've got two seconds. That's good. All in favor?
Mary says aye.
Curtis says aye.
Phil says aye.
Martha says aye.
Gordon says aye. Okay. Dave, your picture and your voice are 100% better.
Can I, as long as we're on commissions, can I ask, did we get any communication from the energy commission yet, Dave, about their chairpersonship?
Rob Sangster has become chair of the energy committee.
So is that anything that we need to act on as the board?
No, I don't think so.
It's sitting around.
Okay, cool.
So thank you very much, Kate and John, for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Done. All right, we'll move on to the Three Corners Intersection, favorite subject. So I think Dave's probably got a presentation here, especially about the money.
Actually, I'm going to go a little bit back into history quite a bit too, there, Gordon, leading up to the, leading up to the budget and, more specifically to the number that you will use for a warning for the vote in August. But I felt based upon the fact that we have two, you know, Phil was around, but he was not part of the select board, you know, due to the fact that we have two select board members that have not been part of this history. Plus, due to the, you know, overall interest from the, from the folks in town, I decided just to go back in time a little bit to bring people up to speed as to what did and did not go into the underlying project, what we've done since then, and how that lead us to where we are today. So I will, the only thing I will ask, this is quite a bit of information. I ask that, you know, we take questions at the end, with an exception of the budget part. I think that you're, I'm going to, you know, open that up after we talk numbers and, you know, with that, because I think it'll be, I do think it'll need some, some explanation. And then I'll finish it off, and then we can have some general conversation or questions on that.
That's good.
Right to you.
Dave, thanks for sending the timeline.
Yep.
If I can find it, you know, let's see this morning.
So that's where I'm going to start. Can everybody still hear me okay?
Yes. Yes.
So my file, and I understand, I read a newspaper article in 1985 that quoted Hiram Allen stating in 1985 that the discussion on this project goes back 30 years, which would bring it back to 1955. I also saw a newspaper article saying that this project goes back to 1973. My files start in 1975, where the town requested to the straight, state. It's a little unclear exactly what they were requesting, but they requested to the district board manager to correct the hazardous situation at Heartland Three Corners at the intersection of Route 5 and 12. They did go on to say that they were inquiring as to when this project might be scheduled for completion. If not scheduled at this time, when will it be reviewed by the transportation board for scheduling? That's because this conversation with the select board in District 4 regarding this particular request dated back to 1975. So there was a three-day lapse there, and the select board was inquiring about where the state was. In 1981, the select, the town manager at that point, Ron Hanley, requested to the state, again District 4, asking them to alleviate basically traffic in and out of Rouse's Point Plaza, which I believe is now the BG's complex and bank. There was, it's not quite as configured as it is now. There's people, you know, traffic coming in and out. And at that point, going into 1985, there was a recognition that traffic was coming out of this and then cutting straight across the triangular part of the intersection. So the select board agreed, and actually, the Heartland Planning Commission at this point in time was heavily involved in this discussion. So the Heartland Planning Commission essentially approached the select board. And Larry, as I go through the 80s and into the 90s, if you have any clearer information, you know, please go ahead, John Bruno, you as well. There was a request, they agreed to put a request to the state to curb or to put guardrails around the triangle and essentially seed and grasp the triangle to essentially to keep people from cutting across. And the select board kind of went back and forth on that because it was also a chance to get on the state's schedule for a redesign with what they called the five-year Betterment project. And at this point in time, Representative Welch, who at that point was Senate pro tem of Vermont, was throwing some considerable weight around and got the project onto that list in 1986, actually going into 1986, going into 1987. And I actually have in my drawer, just to take out and just make my day, you know, just to kind of, kind of adjust or recalibrate, I take it out of my drawer every now and then. The 1986 town report had a direct quote from Hiram Allen stating that this project would be done in the summer of 1987. Again, it was on this Betterment list with the state of Vermont. The price tag at that point was $55,000. The state and the town went back and forth, and then in 1993, a memo pops up to actually Matt Dunn, who was a state representative at that point. Matt was asking, I get, or from what I can tell by the files, was kind of asking what happened to the project in the late 80s. That memo basically stated that the town and the state couldn't come together on essentially the scale of the scope of the project, and therefore, it was dropped. I don't know too many more specifics than that, other than it was on the state list. We couldn't come to terms with it, and it kind of faded away. In 1993 and into 1994, again, the Heartland Planning Commission was very much a part of this. I believe they had a grant. They worked with John Bruno, and John presented five alternatives to the intersection as we know it today. I did contact Jay Bewery about this. You know, the drawings are in my office. They were also part of the scoping study that I'll get to shortly. But Jay, I got the impression from Jay that it was presented to the select board and didn't make it any farther than that, really. It just kind of, again, just kind of died and stayed fairly quiet, at least in my records, until 2007, when the town got involved with the safe routes to school project, which is essentially the sidewalk on Station Road around Route 5. That grant in making it walkable, I think the intent was to be able to walk from the school to the library, or at least from the school into the village. It became apparent at that time with the sidewalk on Station Road and around Route 5 that the ability to cross the intersection. on Station Road and around Route 5, that the ability to cross the intersection from that sidewalk proved difficult. Um, and it was kind of, you know, kind of a red flag. It was kind of discussed. Um, and then in 2011, um, Dana Jacobson Goodhue, um, and her husband, but the letter is from her, uh, in 2011, um, wrote to actually John Bartholomew and, um, essentially stating, um, or describing an incident where they were trying to cross the road. Um, it was the four of them, um, uh, and, uh, the two of them and their two kids, um, the six-year-old or seven-year-old, um, was crossing the road and the, I believe it was a car going northbound to south, which would have been on the outside lane, um, came within inches of hitting the girl. Um, and I believe that, uh, family took up that as a cause to also, um, you know, lobby, I, I guess, the town to make that a safer intersection to cross. But I think that combined with the, um, Safe Routes to School was kind of an impetus to making this a more pedestrian-friendly, um, crossing. Uh, that leads us into 2013, 2012, actually more 2012. And I'm gonna spend a little bit of time on this because this is important and this is really the impetus of the design today. Um, there was a scoping study. So in 2012, the town went, uh, and essentially worked through what today is the Bike Ped Program, which is back involved with this, with this project. Uh, they did a scoping project. I think it was about $30,000. The town had to pay the 20% or maybe the 10% back then, uh, and came up with a document that outlined or, um, shows how they came up with the present design and the process that they did to go through that. Uh, and again, let me just take a moment, uh, or a few to kind of go through that because there's a fair amount of decent information in here and a lot of questions I get, well, they didn't do this or they didn't do that, is actually in this document. Um, you know, so this document, 2012, they did a little bit of a background history, existing conditions.
Dave, Dave, who is they? Who is the firm?
RSG on a White River Junction. Uh, so some of the existing conditions here, uh, again, you didn't have quite the, uh, one-way that we have today. So you had multiple ins and outs of the plaza there, which you can also see the multiple stop signs and kind of the configuration of the intersection, um, and the flow of traffic as you, um, what were, you know, again, kind of a present-day condition. They did go through and they did collect, um, traffic data. They pulled, um, data from the state of Vermont. Um, they also did some crash data history, but, um, here's some of the numbers from 2012. Uh, this is from, uh, V-Trans. US 5 going south, uh, 4,500, that's per day. Um, Vermont 12 going west is 3,100. So those are, you know, kind of the two main, um, corners within this intersection. Uh, they did take a look at that. They did take it into consideration when they came up with their level of service, uh, which is what it's called. They also did go out and they did, uh, traffic, uh, or turn counts, which is a part of this as well. So they did gather this information. Uh, and by the way, they did say, um, based upon their analysis, to go through, um, the main intersection, which is kind of what resembles a four-way today. Um, and then again, as you come out Route 12 through Route 5, took about 16 seconds to get through both of those intersections, uh, and they did project out to 2022 when they put these numbers together. Uh, and here's again, some of the, the level of service information. Um, they also did a kind of a mini, um, resource inventory, much like what we're doing today with the categorical exclusion, not nearly as, as sophisticated as what the federal government's gonna ask, but they touched on it, um, in a, you know, based upon mapping other things, um, looked in, um, you know, deer yards and, and, um, what ones was not a problem. So where they started with this, once they kind of did that, um, background review of the intersection, uh, and here are John Bruno's five designs, uh, that he came up with in 1993, 1994. They actually used this as the backdrop, um, as, you know, studying the alternatives to choose from, that the public was actually gonna choose from. Uh, that's what they started with. And you can see some of the designs that are here that John came up with, one of which was a roundabout, which I think at that time received, um, quite about a feedback, but, uh, they're interesting designs. Um, and you can see kind of where, um, Concept D is where we start to get the four-way intersection, uh, alternative and where that was born from. Again, here are some of the, um, distinct, um, alternatives that he came up with. Uh, and then before they broke out or had public participation, uh, RSG went back and essentially rated each of those five designs. Um, so again, in that first paragraph in preparation of the local concerns meeting, RSG evaluated each of the concepts, um, alternatives. I guess maybe they narrowed it down to three at one point, uh, by developing comparisons to show how the reconfiguration would differ from each other based upon existing conditions. And some of the, the things that they kind of rated them on was open space, the amount of pavement, um, paved roadway area, the delay that, um, each alternative would, um, cause to the reconfiguration. Um, that is, you know, if it was a four-way, how much of a delay would that be at a four-way compared to the present configuration? They took into walking distance, uh, from Station Road, um, total stop signs or, or yield signs per alternative, uh, and they kind of rated those. Um, they came up with kind of a rating like that. Uh, we'll come back to that in a little bit, but then they had an actual public participation. They had public meetings, actually several of these, um, uh, happened throughout the course of this process. One of these public meetings was at, I believe, the 2013 Town Meeting, of which they covered a lot of this. They actually did a presentation. Uh, and then they chose, after that process, uh, and the public participation, they showed or chose or came up with the selection of the preferred alternative. Now, um, it doesn't look exactly like the design today, but there was changes made between this and preliminary and, um, uh, preliminary design, um, tweaks made. I wasn't part of that, so the Select Board may have to weigh in on that, but, um, this is the basis for the decision on the four-way. Kind of get some conceptual slips.
I think Dave just left the meeting. On accident. Um, John, could I ask you a question based on that drawing and a very brief paragraph I just read? Um, so the, it showed the modified four-way stop that still had a continuous, it looked like non-stop service on Route 5, and it said by, if, the paragraph essentially said, "By employing this modified four-way stop, they would be able to maintain a level of service of quality A in both AM and PM peak hours." Given that the current intersection proposal doesn't have that modification and is just a four-way stop, do you have any sense or do you happen to know, uh, what the level of service expectation class would be during those peak hours without the modification?
Well, without analyzing, I, I don't know whether they real analyzed it, uh, with that configuration, but I don't think that it would drop significantly.
Okay.
With the volumes of traffic that are there.
So you think, do you expect we'd still be looking at like a Level B and above service or Level A and above or C and above or?
I would, I would think it would probably be B and above, but you'd really have to analyze it to, to, to figure that out. But the, um, the standard for design for V-Trans is the design for at least a C level or above, and I'm sure we, you would be there with that.
And what, um, if, if you can recall, what is the level of service rating for the current configuration? I didn't catch it.
I, I didn't, I don't recall and I didn't catch it either.
Thanks, John.
Dave, are you anywhere around?
Um, could, would, if we're waiting on Dave, could we, could I describe the proposal for information or, oh yeah, so Neil just said, given that he started the meeting, he may not be able to get back. Thanks, Neil.
I wonder if we all have to start over.
Yeah, I just reached out by text to Dave, but I did not get a response back yet. I, I'm not familiar enough with Microsoft Teams to know if that's true or not, but if he was the organizer, are we now just residue of meeting and there is no meeting? Uh, it's still being recorded though.
Yeah, it's still recording. So Neil, do you happen to know how someone could let him in if they weren't the organizer? Dave gets a early Monday night. Hmm. Is there a default person who would get it? Martha, were you the second person allowed in the meeting, right? You might check and see, have you somehow become the organizer?
I was, I'm checking to see.
I already texted it. I don't know. I got a phone, Dave, and see what happens. Which number, Gordon? The cell or the land? The, the land number.
Not all of us have the Town Manager's cellphone number, Phil hobby.
Well, I could give it to everyone.
He would hate you so much.
Yeah, Curtis, I, I think we should wait on the proposal, just in fact that we're in this flow between the.
Yeah, I was just, I was just thinking of, like, that's still the time.
Dave, if you're there, would you please pick up? We're trying to figure out what to do next, because we've lost you or you, or you've lost us. I'm not sure which it is.
Probably lose half of the.
That didn't work either. No, no answer. Yeah. I'm trying to use cellphone number. Yeah, I, I, I'm beginning to feel that the theory that the meeting's ended is true. Uh, I just got a text.
Here's Dave. Yay!
Yeah, I couldn't get him to answer either.
I think you're muted though, Dave. Where did I lose you?
Woo!
Uh, back in 1978, I think.
Uh, or 75, didn't he say 75?
No, it was in 90.
Actually, I think you, you had just gone through the summary of the four alternatives,
2013.
The advantages and disadvantages of the four alternatives in the scoping study, I think is where you were.
So in a nutshell, uh, it was a 10-second, uh, wait time that they determined by bringing that into a four-way intersection. Uh, they had public participation, um, both on the November 19th and also, um, at Town Meeting that year. Um, following that, they had the vote on 2014, um, that, um, had over 45-minute discussion. Uh, the vote was to raise $450,000 for the intersection project to be borrowed from the Capital Project Reserve Fund, um, and to be paid back over a five-year period of time. Hopefully I won't lose you here. Do you still win me?
Yep.
Okay. So since 2014, they've gone into the, um, they had preliminary plans. They then submitted designs to the state of Vermont in 2017. 2017, the state of Vermont came back and said, "There's some deficiencies here." One, uh, we needed to get the easements, um, from surrounding property owners. We had two, um, of the easements that we needed. We still needed to get easements from Matt Dunn, who was a new property owner, and we still needed to get easements from Billy Gosher. Um, and that started essentially the, um, uh, a process that we sat down with Matt Dunn. We sat down with Billy Gosher and Mike from Mike's Deli. Uh, we talked about what we were gonna do and what we needed. And some of the feedback that we received from them was, um, "We would like you to do this project essentially as a whole. We don't want to see you rip up the middle of town multiple times." Uh, Billy, uh, was felt particularly susceptible to that, um, and a break in business, as did Mike. Um, they had just repaid, paid Route 12 and that created some financial hardship for both of those, um, businesses. So the sidewalk from the intersection to the library was going to be done at a later point in time. We decided, decided to try and include that as part of the project. And they also said, "We would like you to consider sparing the utilities as well while you're doing this project." Uh, we said we would look into it. Uh, we did. We came back in the fall of 2018, uh, and said, "This is what we, we think it's gonna cost." Um, and we put this to the Select Board. It was about a $500,000 price tag. It was kind of a general estimate. And there was, um, multiple people. people in attendance, upwards to 25, 30 people, that would also voiced that they would like us to do the utilities. And the select board said we would put that to the voters and let the voters decide. That was the fall of 2018. It wasn't until the spring of 2019 that we finished the easement process, and the summer of 2019, we applied for a bicycle pedestrian grant. You'll see why that's important when we talk about the funding for this. And, um, kinda brings us up to today, where when we went and looked at the utilities to bring this to the public, we had two alternatives that we were gonna look at. We thought one would be a little bit cheaper than the other. Unfortunately, it ended up being too much of a burden to one of the property owners, and we chose essentially what we'll call alternative A over B. And we're putting that to a vote in August of 2020. So here are the numbers. So, I'm gonna, yeah, I don't mean to stretch this out too far, but I'm gonna start in May, or in, yeah, in May of 2017. And this was when I, just before I came in, uh, we were looking at a project cost. And again, I've got at the bottom here, I've got a total of $644,627. However, we do have close to $100,000 Queachy Road Grant. We've had that since, you know, since before I came. And also, as a part of that number is, I've got here, it's listed as an ad alternate, but that is the price amount for doing the sidewalk from the post office to the library, at least at this point in time. Bringing the town cost down to $489 for this. Now, what I want you to focus on are these two numbers right here, and I've got it in bold. I've got site engineering at 15% and a 15% contingency. Now, I have added that into the budget, and I've actually added it into this discussion. When I came, we, the, the, the construction engineering wasn't technically included in this, or at least it was underestimated, and there wasn't a contingency on the estimate coming out of the engineer. So, at that point, you can almost, if you take these two numbers away, uh, you almost come down to a number that's, you know, about $340,000. And that shows that it's within our spending capacity, or at least borrowing capacity. At the time, again, because the engineering was underestimated, we kinda came or, or kinda estimated a generic $50,000. It was kind of a shoot-from-the-hip number we thought the construction engineering might be. So if you utilize that number, the project cost is about $390,297. Say, oh, that's pretty good. I wanna remind everybody that we have spent about $100,000 on design engineering at this point in time. When I was here, it was a little bit less than that. So if you add $100,000 onto this number, it's $490,297. So, we have been running about, at a bare bones budget, we've been running about $40,000 to $50,000 over, at least according to this estimate. Again, I put this number in here. This is gonna become important as I get to today's budget. But this, these numbers, I feel more comfortable with. I feel more comfortable with a 15% of project cost for my construction engineering. I feel a lot more comfortable having a 15% contingency in there. We add that in there, then we're over our $450,000 borrowing capacity, actually by quite a bit. I, I have alluded to the fact that the numbers were fairly consistent. In far, for course, they were very consistent right up until I opened my mouth, but, um, these numbers are fairly consistent. They actually went down a little bit in October of 2017, this estimate. The project cost is a little bit less. And then they come back up a little bit to the 2000, the original 2017 budget. It comes back up a little bit. So these numbers are pretty consistent. Again, we're running, you know, if I use the bare bones estimate, we were still $40,000, $30,000, $40,000 over. If I utilized these numbers that I really like, then we were a fair amount over budget. So, today, um, is the budget I have come up with for the underlying project and where we are at today. And when I use this budget, I use my 15% construction engineering cost, and I use my 15% contingency. That is, gives a pretty high number. We may or may not need it, but it's in there. Because we have a grant, and the state of Vermont says you have to do certain things, we have to have a municipal project manager, $32,000 is added to this. As is an estimate, you know, we talked about the $16,000 that we needed to do for the resource inventory, essentially that categorical exclusion that the Bike Ped program is asking us to do. And we said, you know, let's just throw in, you know, another $10,000, $11,000 to make sure we get over the finish line. So, I feel pretty good or better about these numbers that I put here than, say, we were working with back down here. And this number includes the sidewalk from the post office to the library. Now, what we've got here helping us is $269,600 in a bike ed grant. Still gives us a project cost of $449,297. You say, oh, man, that's not very good, and it isn't. But, and we did have between, and this is where I went ahead and opened my big mouth and said, yeah, things haven't really changed. But when this came out a couple weeks ago, uh, there was a jump of about $100,000 in project cost, $479, about $485 total. And up here, you're gonna see that it is up to $585, so it's like a $100,000 jump. So, uh, I talked to the folks at Bike Ped and said, hey, we've had a $100,000 increase, and they said, okay, well, that happens. Reapply, and we think you can get additional grant funding. I've been, again, conservative here on the number. I think that we would get, we would apply and receive, hopefully in the fall, this number. That comes according to fruition, and again, these folks are telling me that's what we should do. Then, this number comes down to $381,297. And we've spent $100,000 in design engineering, puts us at $481,297. Well, you say we're still over the $450. Well, we are, but, you know, I think we can work with a $30,000 issue. I think that we can absorb a $30,000 situation if that's what we end up with. However, also, remind yourself that I've got a 15% contingency in here, and perhaps some other monies that we may or may not spend, which I don't think that we had before. And the sidewalk from the post office to the library is now included, and I'm still running just over at $30,000 over that $450. But again, that 15% contingency is in there. If, just for the sake of discussion, I don't think I can do this. Did you still hear me?
No.
Okay. Uh, if you look at the budget without a contingency, um, you know, I'm at $327, add the $100,000, I'm at $427, which is below. If I cut it in half, I say, heck, I'll try a 7.5% contingency. I'm almost right on target at, add the $100,000, $454. So, the Bike Ped program has helped us tremendously. We are still short. However, the folks at the Bike Ped grant say, okay, um, the increase is justifiable. Apply for the differential, and we think you can get the money. Now, I go through that entire process, one, to let everybody know where we are at from a budget perspective on the underlying project. However, it lays the foundation for why we're really here tonight, which is for the utility project. And why do I come up with those numbers? Well, they're the same numbers, except for they're bigger, because the project cost, ultimately, we have the utilities baked in here, so the project cost now becomes bigger. Therefore, the 15% number becomes bigger. So just for construction engineering and contingency, that's almost over $300,000. But the numbers are in there. I think they're the right numbers. These are up-to-date estimates, including, and we went out and got detailed estimates, because we didn't want to be too far off when the time comes to vote. So, without any grants involved, the total project cost would be $1,403,930. However, we do have grant money involved. And if you take into possible additional grant monies, it comes down to $961. But for the sake of the warning, and I'll get to that in a minute, the warning, I've used this number, but the warning says we may get additional grant monies, and we can act that in. But I want everybody to know how I came up with this $1,403,930. We have the grant money, and this is grant money we've already received. Brings it down to $1,411,151. So, because we've signed a certain piece of paper when we did about a year and a half ago, it allows us to bring in some of our prior expenses. We can pull in about $20,000 worth of engineering, design engineering into the bond. So the amount that I have got on the paperwork for the town to ask for to bond for this project would be $1,61,15177. Well, I'll round up, but anyway, um, that's where the numbers come from, and with a number that is on the warning as presented to the select board tonight, which we will sign on July 6. So Gordon, I'll stop it here to answer any questions regarding the budgetary numbers.
Good. So I guess we're open for questions, if anybody wants to.
This is John Bruno. Um, on the, um, so the vote in August is to approve the $500,000 for the utilities, or to allow the town to bond the $1,400, or whatever the billion-dollar-plus?
If, we would essentially refinance this project, John. So we would bond the $1,411,151. I do add $20,000 to that to pull in some of the design engineering costs, but we would bond for essentially $1,61,151.
Right, but, but the...
To do, to do, to do the underlying project and the utilities.
Right, but the warrant, what, is the warrant gonna read, uh, to bury the utilities and bond the $1,61,000?
So, John, I, I've got a copy of the warning. Just let me get, um, let me answer any finance, any budgetary questions, and then I'll, I'll get to the warning. I'll tell you exactly what the warning's gonna say.
Okay.
So, Dave, I have some, I have some questions, um, that I imagine are dealt with in statute. So if you know the answer, that would be awesome. And if not, you can point me to the statute, and I'll be happy to read it, or call the Secretary of State, or whatever is necessary to figure it out. But, the question is about design and engineering. So this design and engineering, you said we're in $100,000 for that. But I presume that $100,000 has been getting paid out of the general fund as it has been invoiced. And the article that was approved by the voters was to borrow up to $450,000 from the capital reserve fund. So up to now, we haven't actually borrowed anything from the capital reserve fund, have we? Even though we have paid the $100,000 in design and engineering, because those costs have come out of the general fund? Or how does that work? How does that balancing work in the budget?
Yep, so, and it is documented in the audit. So we talked about this with the auditors to make sure the numbers are, are on par with what we've borrowed. But, um, we, when we, except for maybe a small amount in the very beginning, that we may have paid for directly out of the general fund, we pay for it out of the general fund, but then reimburse the general fund from the Capital Projects Fund with that money. So we have essentially, at this point in time, borrowed from the Capital Projects Fund, close to $100,000.
Okay, okay.
This is, this is... Does that mean, John Bruno, again, does that mean there's only $350,000 left in order to conform to the vote that can be borrowed from the capital fund?
So, John, when I, so, for instance, so we've got the $450,000 number. So when I've been talking about these numbers right here, I have tacked on that $100,000, as I have discussed this with you. So, right here, this shows a $381,297 number. That's actually below the $450, okay? I would, I would be sleeping very tight with that number. However, add the $100,000 on to that, it's $481,297. So we're technically, you know, estimated, again, some of these expenses are estimated, estimating that we could potentially be $31,000 over the $450.
Uh, how are these, are these grants, other than, I guess, the $68,000 one which you're applying for, are the other grant of, and I guess the $93,000? I guess the question I'm asking, is a $269,400 grant locked in at this point?
Uh, it, it is, yes.
Okay.
We were actually, we received this maybe September of 2009, what are we in now, 2020? We received it in 2019.
Okay. This is... So, basically, the only thing hanging out there is the $68,000 that you're gonna be applying for this September.
Yep.
John, I think there's someone else trying to get in.
Yeah, Gordon, it's Sarah Bruce.
Yes.
On each one of these tables, you have an entry that has no money listed on any of them that I saw, and I don't know what it is, and you've just taken it off, so I need to read the title. It's something about full CE something CIS. What is that? And you have it in every one. Is there a possibility that, in fact, there will be something added for whatever that is?
Nope, it, uh, we've actually taken it away.
What is it?
It was, hold on, I gotta get my, my screen back here. So the full CE items was an item that the engineer had on their estimate. It was about $15,000, $16,000 for like a, an engineering, you know, trailer and some materials and stuff that they would need. But in discussions with certain people, by hiring this bike, and that was the only engineering budget line item that we really had, by By hiring and factoring in this construction engineer, one, we don't think they're going to need a trailer for this particular site. And two, they should be bringing whatever they need to bring with them. So this line item really isn't needed.
Okay. And then just to confirm, you have on each table, the very bottom line that says so much for town costs. What you're saying with regards to the 100,000 that has already been paid for, the engineering and design. All of those numbers, like the 381 that you're on right now is really 100,000 more. Total, but the 100,000 has actually been paid for borrowed from the capital fund. Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Dave, Matt Dunn has asked a question on the chat and he should jump in if he wants to.
Hey Dave, two, two questions. One is, and it may just because it, it is more comfortable on a budget basis. But we use seven and a half percent in order to get to a number that you felt we could live with and still use the, the current lending or borrowing capacity of the town. It's 7.5% and then in the estimate that's going to be presented to the voters for burying the utility use 15%. And the difference between 15% and seven and a half percent, especially of that larger number is significant. Is there a reason to believe that there is, you know, proportionally greater risk with the burying the utility lines of that, of going way over budget? It just, it it's out in the comparison.
So I'm just going to back up and, and you know, I put out the seven and a half and the 0% contingency is kind of a comparison. So essentially the underlying, let's just stick with the underlying project for a second, Matt. The underlying, the underlying project has a range, you know, with a range of 0% contingency to a 15% contingency.
Yep.
I'm either $20,000 below or $30,000 over the 450 number. That's straddling it, but you know, going into a project after eight, nine years and it being fairly substantial project, I think that's pretty good. I like, I like the 15% number. That makes me comfortable.
Sure.
Okay. That gives me a little bit of, you know, if we goof, we get out there and hit ledge. If we get out there and hit something unknown, we go another two years. There's, there's a number in there that's just added contingency. So I carry, again, this seven and a half percent and the 0% was there to kind of give you where we're at with that $450,000 number. I come over and I carry that 15% number over to the util, over to the, does everybody see that?
Yep.
I carry that over to the utility project, same 15% number. Okay. Engineer says, boy, that's pretty conservative, $153,000 for that project. You know, that's a lot to have in there for contingency. I speak with the state of Vermont and they're like, no, we like that number. It is, it is just that, you know, a contingency. And I think that if we, you know, in fact, did that in a little bit earlier, we would be a little bit more comfortable at this point. You know, given the fact that there is some complexity, Matt, to, you know, burying the cables. You know, just it's, that project is actually more complex than the underlying project. I, my recommendation is just that to carry that, but it, you're right. It's a pretty big number. As is this construction engineering, which I would hope that would come in a little bit lower than that.
Yeah.
But you know, I'm hearing that that tends to be where things fall or where you should be. So that's what I'm recommending. Now, I should note that if the project goes out to bid, and let's just say this, it comes in 100 grand less. Or project goes as according to plan and we don't use any of that 153. We borrowed the number, you can still, you can't prepay essentially. But you can use that number, you can use that excess to repay that loan over the next several years, as long as you've got that money available to repay it, you know, kind of providing a buffer to the tax rate. So just because you borrow it doesn't mean you need to use it. You can actually put it back towards the principal.
Matt, I just want to jump in for just a minute. I think I could take most of the blame for asking Dave to try smaller contingencies. Dave and I had some pretty long discussions about this and in an effort to keep within our budget of $450,000. We were looking for various ways to make it work out and that's why these other possibilities are listed.
And, and my point, Gordon, is that if you're going to present that as sort of the, the, the alternative to the the complete project that includes burying the utilities, it's not really apples to apples. It may not matter in the end, but if you, I mean, it's a matter of $150,000, if you, if you went with the seven and a half percent contingency on the, on the project that includes burying the utility line, it would be a $150,000 difference, which is
Yes, you're right, Matt. You're right, Matt. But I think what's going to happen here is that we're going to forget all about the zero and the seven and a half percent and go with the 15 on everything. Because that's what Dave has looked in very seriously, spent a lot of time on this. And for the selectman to, to change his mind for no particular good reason, doesn't make a lot of sense.
I get it. I get it.
And we can make this work. We have to remember the side, additional sidewalk, which is one of the main reasons why this is over. So we can make this work without lowering the contingency.
I think what Matt, like the way I see it, Matt is kind of worried, like it doesn't seem honest and it seems like kind of a scary number when you make the contingent, contingency larger. That is less worrisome to me. What my question is, is since we're bonding it, the town is actually motivated to accurately estimate the costs because anything we borrow has attendant costs that come with it. So my question is, as you were saying, Dave, if we overborrowed and then we use that and reapply that to the principal by the time the project finished, say, two years. After two years, we take that $75,000, we put it back into the principal. How much will having borrowed that extra $75,000 cost the town? What will be the actual cost of having that buffer? That's, that's something I'd be interested in knowing.
So let me give you two answers. One, that's really complicated. I'm not even sure I can give you the answer because it really depends on where the project ends.
Yeah.
You know, is it going to be, you know, the project goes perfectly, we don't use a contingency. Or we hit ledge and, and other problems and it is, you know, we use it. So depending on where that falls is you know, what we're going to end up with for excess. So you know, it's really difficult. And even, you know, I do have a tax rate scenario to show you. And even then I got to use an average number because the payment, the first year is, you know, more than the last payment. So you know, if you want to, how this is going to affect the tax rate, I kind of use an average. Kind of talking almost the same thing there. Well, let me address Matt's question. And, and I think it's important to differentiate the underlying conversation, the underlying project conversation and the contingency versus the, the utility budget and what we've got with there. It's almost, you know, I showed you a lot of that to show you how I came up with that utility number for a budget. Matt, I'm just going to, you know, this is just my experience in a couple of these projects. I'm just going to throw out the Norwich Fire Station to you. We got into a discussion where it became political, the whole idea of the contingency almost became political. You know, if we add the contingency, it's a higher number of people aren't going to vote for it. If it's a lower contingency, the town's not going to use it. It's more palatable. We were working, you know, these are pretty strong estimates we put together here. But with Norwich, they were, weren't, they were more, they weren't quite as strong. They went with no contingency for the political reason that they just felt it looked better on the ballot. And right off the bat, the estimates came in before they even went to construction. The estimates came in higher, which means that they were automatically over budget and sucking wind. And they, they tried to pull some things out of the project and other things. They brought it down, the project more towards the borrowing limit and then during construction they went over. So you know, all because they didn't want to throw the contingency in there for political reasons of what would look good or what would look better for a vote. You know, I'm going to come back to, this is a project, you know, this is how much it's going to cost. I, you know, you can battle over, you know, an 8% versus a 15% contingency. But I wouldn't go in any less than 10.
This is John Bruno. I've been involved in engineering estimates and construction for over 50 years and the 15% is a good number.
And just to like, sort of answer my, my own question is, let's say that we double estimated the contingency we actually required. And we only really needed 7.5%. The cost of having that extra contingency, if it were a three-year project and we immediately applied the balance of it and we have like a three point or a 3% APY is $6,000 or something like that. So that's how much would be paid just to have that buffer zone. And like you say, it's a lot cheaper to have a buffer zone than run into a problem.
Yeah, this is Phil. I just would concur from another world that I lived in for 35 years and dealing with projects of the size of three to five million. We always had contingencies in that 15% range. And they saved me many times from going back for monies that just weren't allocated. And there are times where I, I returned money and things looked really good. So I would sort of say we're doing best practices, if nothing else, and we should leave these contingencies where they are.
So we're looking for other comments or questions?
Dave, I had a question about applying that 20,000. As I was from design and engineering, as I was reading the warning, I saw the 1,61,000 and I saw, I thought to myself, this number came out of nowhere. So how can that 20,000 be applied to this warning and not the total? And why would we want to apply this 20,000, not the balance?
It's basically, you know, we can't because we, so I don't have, I'd have to go through a lot of files. But in your packet, there is a piece of paper you will need to sign on January 6th. It's called a declaration of intent. And that is essentially a legal paper that's, you're, you're declaring your intent to do the project, you're declaring your intent to borrow. When you declare that and when you sign it, it gives you the ability for a certain amount of time before a project to utilize those expenses as part of project expenses. We signed one of those maybe a year and a half ago. We updated it again last November and we'll update it here next, next meeting. That allows us to pull in, you know, anything. Again, I can't, I can't remember the timeline, but you know, the timeline as to when you sign it.
60 days.
Unfortunately, most of those expenses of the design engineering, you know, as I put in that timeline. You know, preliminary design was presented to the town back in December of 2015. So that, you know, predates that declaration of intent by three years. So that's just money we can't pull in. You know, so a caveat to remember is that 80,000 will still need to be paid back to the capital project fund. But it's still money we've borrowed and we'll need to pay that back. But that 80 is not part of this bonding, but 20,000 of it can be.
And because you estimate in the 60 days prior to January or July 6th, we will have spent 20,000 or that's what we have spent thus far.
So I had Martin go back as to how much we've spent since wait, maybe January 2018. I think it was January 8th of 2018 that we signed the first one. So I didn't bother going back before that. I don't think there was a whole lot of activity my first six months here that, you know, we did on this. So you know, from January 8th of 2018 to present day, there was about $20,000 worth of expenses. And that's how we came up with that number. It was just under 20.
Thanks.
Dave, we don't seem to be getting a lot of comments here, but I would like to change the type of what we're discussing just a little bit. Cause I'm thinking to the two listserv comments that you sent everyone last night, one from Matt and one from Gary. And they dealt, those were dealt more, more basically with, do we do the project at all? Do we do it with now or do we do it later? How much is going to, how is it going to be paid back? And whether we, whether it's wise to bury the cables or not. So I, I have a few comments that I would like to make in those regards and then maybe it'll inspire someone to ask a question or two. So I'll start with you, Matt. You, you mentioned, I, I just don't, I want it to be perfectly fair how, how these things are commented on and you used the word couple. Two different times referring to paying back the $450,000, meaning two years. A couple is always two and in fact, it's five years. So I just want to make that clear. I want, I also want to make the point that we are would be removing one pole and all of the wires. And there's no question in my mind that it would look a lot better. But we do have to remember that we're going to add poles on all the ends where it comes back out of the ground again. And, and conduits that go up the poles. So we're going to lose one pole, but we're going to gain three or four more. And there's nothing pretty about them. And, and my concern also is that it's such a tiny portion of the village. And this brings me to a question for John Bruno, if he can answer it. How, if we looked at this project and burying the wires and doing it piecemeal or doing it all at once. Would it make sense to move forward with doing the little teeny part now if we thought we were going to do the whole village at some other time? And just hold on, your answer just for a minute. And Gary, I thought your comments were really good. I thought Matt's were too. I'm not diminishing Matt's comments. But Gary's main, main point I think was let's get on with it, not put it off any longer. And, and I would agree a hundred percent. So John, can, can you give me any idea of, is it really that much of a deal to come back and bury wires at another time?
Oh, you're tearing up, you're basically you're going to pay a premium because you're tearing up what you've already done.
Yeah.
So
What if that was in conjunction with a much larger project though, of, of burying the wires where they should be buried, all the way to the the wires where they should be buried, all the way to the edges of the village?
Well, you're going to pay, if you, if you, if you do the improvement without burying the electrical or burying the utilities and then you come back and burying the utilities, you're going to have an additional cost of putting everything back together again that you just tore up.
Yeah, I can see that.
So there is, there would be savings. I have no idea what that would be, but you know, that, that cost would, you'd have to restore it to what, you know, what it was before you tore it up. So you're, you have additional paving costs, you're going to have additional disturbance costs.
Gordon, I respond, and then I have a question. First off, I, your comment about additional poles, I don't really think is relative. The focus really has been the pole with the north, south, east, west, or east or west, I guess just west, poles. And the other poles are not consequential. They're there and having the wires come out of the ground is inevitable, but they're going to be, I don't think there is going to be as many poles as you just suggested. The second is, is that a question for you that I don't understand with this budget and maybe there's something that's been changed is, I can remember asking when, when I first got on the board and this came up about whether the green space would have, was there money to do landscaping? But most importantly, was the asphalt underneath that north, south section of Route 5, the cutoff, was that concrete going to be removed? And I still have not gotten an answer to that.
Neither, neither have I, Phil, and that is very important. And I hope that isn't where we spend our contingency because the point was made several times that we're not going to make grass grow on six inches of topsoil on top of concrete. It just isn't going to work unless it rains every day. So I don't know the answer to that.
So I can, I can get, we've, we've actually answered that question before. The thought was is that it really wouldn't be all that much to do. You're digging up the pavement, you got the excavator there, you know, a little bit more into the trucks, you know, you may have a little bit more back and forth with a couple of trucks, but the thought was is that it really wouldn't add too significantly to the project.
That's good.
But it's not in the, it's not in the present estimate.
John, I think you felt as though it really wasn't, it was based upon what we've got going on there. I think you felt, you know, that north, south from that one side to the other and digging that up, we're already digging up the pavement right above it. The thought was is that you really weren't adding, you know, hardly adding to the project.
That's where budgets go wrong, I'm afraid.
Here's a, here's a map. I mean, maybe this is for Matt's information. I don't know if everybody can see this, but this is done in, in 2015. And, but is there any place for trees? Here we have the ark, there are one, two, three, four, five, six trees planted over near the sidewalk. It's not fair to say there's no place to plant, plant trees with, if the pole is left there, because there is, as long as we missed the wires.
This is John Bruno. I have a question on the, on the budget or on the origin, on the estimate without bury, on the original estimate without burying the lines, there's no dollars in the utilities line, so there would be no utility cost involved in the, in just doing the intersection?
Yeah, I believe that's correct. Utilities stay where they are. There is, there is some drainage in there, John, but as far as the cables overhead, they stay, stay as is.
Okay, I'm, you know, I'm just, you know, everything's going to be working around it and just want to make sure that there are no utility costs that are going to be involved just because of the construction that's going on, not relocation or anything, but you're going to be working around these utilities and is this, is there, has there been something factored in on that? Just a question.
So John, I don't know what, you know, the, the estimates provided for the actual, you know, work to the, to the intersection of the sidewalks, you know, I don't know if there's a certain number in that number there, you know, so what is it, 597 or 578 for the work for the underlying project? Another eight or so for the erosion, you know, but I don't, you know, again, the underlying project, there is, there is drainage work, but not anything, you know, you may have to work around or, you know, work with a telephone pole or something to that effect. But as far as moving a telephone pole or having Green Mountain Power come in and relocate, I don't believe that that has been discussed as an issue.
I understand that.
Dave, are you letting people into the meeting? I just got a text.
Is that Matt Dunn? His ears must be burning because every time we're talking about something else, he leaves and as soon as we start talking about something of interest to him, he just pops right back into the meeting.
Matt, Matt froze up for a while. So let me just finish, let me just take a moment to just get to John Bruno's question real quick. I had a number up there as to what this means. I've had several questions to me personally as to what it means to the tax rate. For the underlying project, and this is for a 20-year payback, again, the first couple of years is more up towards 70. The later part of the years is down into the 50s, but the average payback is about $65,503 a year. Based upon the, the grand list that we just used for this fiscal year, it would be an increase to the tax rate of essentially one and a half cent per $100 of assessed valuation. That translates and I generally use a $250,000 assessed value household seems to be about the average in Heartland. Might be getting out of that range these days, but 250 seems to be about right. That is $36.50 to your tax bill. So this year on a $250,000 valuation, this is just municipal now, not including education, just the municipal tax. Remember, education's about 80% of your tax bill. So on a $250,000 house, this year would have been about close to $1,300 and the 36.50 and this year your tax bill would have been 13,0850. For the $90,000 a year payback, that's $90,000 a year, that would be over a five-year period. It's about a two cent increase or two cents per $200 or $100 assessed value. Adds about $50 to your DAX bill for a $250,000 house. Lastly, John, just to get to your question, what the actual warning would look like? Warning is going to end up, let me get there. This is what your ballot's actually going to look like, day of voting. So the language basically reads, so the general obligation bonds or notes, town of Heartland in amount not to exceed $1,062,000. Again, that's the 1,042 plus the $20,000 in design engineering that we can pull in. There's a possibility we're going to get more grant money in the fall. So the next sentence reads, subject to reduction from the receipt of available state and federal grants and aid. This should be issued for the purpose of financing the cost of making certain public improvements, essentially the reconstruction and reconfiguration of the Route 12 and 5 intersection, including utility relocation. And then it gives the actual cost of the project, John. So it then goes on to say an estimated cost of $1,425,000. So it's kind of confusing, but the intent is to be, again, a lawyer wrote this, to be transparent that the, the, the actual project cost is 1,425, that includes the $20,000 design engineering we're going to pull into it. We've got essentially 360 something thousand dollars in grant money at the moment, so it ends up with a net amount of 1,062 that you're actually asking the voter to borrow. If you're in favor of that, then you check this box here and if not, you check that one. Okay? Clarify anything for you, John, or?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Davis, I sort of said to you once already today, that confuses the heck out of me. Having the two numbers and the last number being the 14, 1,425. Is there any way that we can, that general counsel will sort of change that?
Maybe, but again, the intent here is that the project cost is there. I believe that that may even be a part of the necessary warning. You have grants involved and the net result is 1,062.
Phil, just like going to the shop, shopping center, price and then the discounted price. Looks like a bargain to me.
Regardless, there are two numbers in there and the last number is the higher number. That's generally speaking what people react to.
Hello, Dave, this is Chuck Brenton. Something we haven't spoken about since we're borrowing money for 20 years is the long-term maintenance cost on this project. You pointed out to me in a phone conversation that we will be doing the improvements, but the state of Vermont will essentially own most of the project, most of the territory on which the project sits and that you feel that they will be then still responsible for maintenance. Now, in the winter is one example, they've been dumping a mountain of snow, salty snow on that triangle and you said that they may still continue to do that. So I'm concerned, if we look at the state's history of providing maintenance, it's pretty poor. And you look at the condition of Route 5, it's nothing but potholes and invasive weeds. So if we wanted to undertake the maintenance on the project going forward to try to keep it unified, have we done any estimates of what our, our cost, our investment in long-term maintenance might be? And specifically, I have a question about the utilities. If there's salty snow piled on top of the intersection where the utilities are buried, I think those of us that have underground service knows that the cost of repair on buried utilities is much higher than the cost of overhead repair. And if we have salty water running down through the ground, it's inevitable there might be repair costs involved. And I'm wondering, who is going to be responsible for repairing the underground utilities?
So yeah, a whole bunch of questions wrapped up in there. I'm not sure I can totally answer the last one, although I'll tell you what my guess is, but so this is the very, and people were quick to point out, look, it's a state highway. That's truly what is unique about this project is the town has chosen to take on a project that is state highway, generally such as Woodstock on Route 4 and Windsor and Route 5. A town enters into essentially a maintenance agreement with the state of Vermont and takes over a segment of road, making it easier to put crosswalks and, and other things into that segment. But the flip side is you have to maintain that road. So for instance, Woodstock does have potholes all through Route 4 because Woodstock Town or Woodstock Village is responsible for that maintenance. We have not entered into that contract with the state of Vermont. State of Vermont, this is still a state highway. What we're trying to achieve is to obtain a 1111 permit from the state of Vermont, allowing us to work within the right of way. They're essentially approving the design and every other aspect of this. We have to have additional state oversight, which is budgeted. They also want a person on site from time to time to make sure that we're doing what we should be doing. I don't think we would normally get that oversight if it was a different situation, but we do not take control of Route 5 and Route 12, to my knowledge, following this project.
And Chuck, I would like to answer your question that maintenance would be more expensive as far as the utilities is concerned. It's actually just the opposite. At your home, when utilities are buried, they're not buried within a tunnel-like situation where, which they would be in this particular case. So in fact, the utilities' cost of maintenance goes down and the ability for a utility to run new cables or different cables is much, much easier than it would be if it was another cable to your house.
Chuck, I would try to answer the question about the triangle. If we spend money on shrubbery and trees and artwork or whatever in that triangle, we're not going to allow the state to fill it full of salty snow in the wintertime. They're, they're going to have to take their snow somewhere else. I wouldn't be concerned about that.
Another, another question that I have, as you know, I would be encouraged to buy local, especially when it comes to food, but also to any kind of the transactions that takes place. And so my question is, this is a pretty large project, being done on state property. Dave just said it's going to be overseen by an inspector from the state. So my question is, what will be the opportunity for Heartland or local contractors, local people to participate in this project or is it estimated that we'll just be sending this money off, Lord knows where, to some major contractor like Pike Industries or someplace? Is there any opportunity for any local participation in this project?
The answer is yes and no. It's going to be an open bid process. However, I believe that the state is going to request that they're pre-qualified and John might be able to answer that a little bit more, but they're going to need to have shown experience on, you know, a project such as this. So if somebody doesn't have experience in conducting, you know, if somebody comes in as a little bid and they're not, you know, on the state's radar, they may be read it out. So you're going to be looking for somebody and as would we as well, we're going to be looking for somebody to trust as well as whoever may be the little bidder.
Typically, you may ask for, before you actually put the bid or while you're asking for bid, you might ask for interested parties and their qualifications and then you would limit your bid to those companies that actually have the, you know, that are on the, the trans approval list. Dave, I have a question. Are, are the plans in final? Are the plans in final design stage? Or is there more engineering required to come up with final design plans?
So we are, we are essentially at final design, John. And it's kind of split in hairs, but we're not, we're not at bid design. So we are, and that goes for the utility design as well. And the utility would just essentially, I'm making this simplistic, but it's kind of overlaid on to the existing project plans. But it's still, and this is why the Bike Pet Program is actually kind of a good thing. It's actually in review right now with various aspects of V-Trans, which it's already been through for the 1111 permit. And we'll need to go back to Teresa Gilman for the 1111 permit. So there may be some tweaks, you know, to this final V-Trans discussion. And that's as if, you know, it's also just assuming that there's no issues with the resource inventory that's currently underway. You know, if things continue to move forward, then, you know, I kind of talked about it in that, that design, that $27,000 I had in that last budget for the underlying project is also in the utility. 16 was, and again, grant money is involved in that. That was for kind of the resource inventory, the archaeological dig. There's maybe about $11,000 in there to get us over the finish line in case there is anything from, you know, the final to bid design. But it's been presented in final format to the state of Vermont once. We did do some tweaks when we, when Matt Dunn and I talked about some real detailed stuff in front of his porch and around, you know, the driveway or the parking lot. Goes up to a couple of feet from his porch. So there were some real questions as to how that's going to work and we tweaked some things. But essentially, it's, it's there and it has been for almost two years. We've been kind of, you know, playing around with the easements and the utility question. We did do the design for the utilities in that period of time, but we're kind of hankering to, you know, represent this to the state. You know, we just, we need to know whether the utilities are going to be involved or not before we do that.
Okay. Thanks.
Dave, this is Chuck Brenton again. Getting back to the buried, the underground utilities. Those of us who have homes that would underground service know that we have to pay that cost of having underground service brought from the nearest pole or transformer. And I'm curious, I think you mentioned at some point, there was an estimate of cost per service in the area that's going to receive underground. Do you recall what that cost is? And the recipients, the either businesses or the homes, are they going to contribute part of that to recover part of that cost of getting underground service?
I don't know if that's completely been fleshed out yet, Chuck, to tell you the truth. There may be one or two buildings that may need to be upgraded if the underground utilities to come in. But that will need to be, that'll need to be fleshed out. I don't really care to put that work effort into it until I know whether we're even going to contemplate that. So that would be probably one of the final things to kind of close this out.
Again, I have one final question. Since I recall back in 18, in the fall of 18, when this discussion came up and was presented to the select board, there was some discussion that like in Woodstock, which their project was almost exclusively paid by private donations, that there might be an opportunity for private participation, private donations in this project, especially since it seems some people who are supporting it might have that capacity. And I'm wondering, has there been any expression of private donation interest? Have any been received or do you anticipate any private donations that might be received offset the cost?
I think there's always some discussion and hope that, you know, somebody will magically come out of the air and solve some of our problems. Two things working against that, you know, I think that the answer is, the quick answer is no. We have not, you know, looking at being dependent on somebody donating or multiple people donating money to do it. And two, that would probably take a concerted effort. Not that it can't be undertaken, but I, you know, at this point, the project needs to move forward. You know, we do have partners involved at this point in time, which is the state of Vermont, which always likes to see things keep moving, even though to a point they've held us up. So we would essentially need to, you know, have that activity and try and raise that money. In the meantime, you know, if you don't or, you know, whichever way, you know, it still needs to go forward. So quick answer is no. Looking to move this forward somewhat realistically, thinking that the taxpayer will pay for it. I haven't heard anybody step forward and offer to try and capture that money, nor have I heard anybody move forward or step forward and say they'll pay for it.
GoFundMe.
Dave, there are quite a few questions in the chat function that I don't think all of them have been answered.
Thank you, Martha.
Yeah, Dave put it up.
You already answered that first one from Matt. Yeah, so it starts with Stuart, according to how I've been watching it. Or no, Matt has the second one. Could you add on the end of the article of which X has already been received in grant dollars?
Can you say that again, Curtis? I got to scroll down a little bit more, I guess.
We have, I think there's this Stuart, Stuart has the question about the tax rate, which we already talked about. Then he has a question about the impact on the plaza in Bee Gees. And then the next question is Matt Dunn's asking about adding something to the end of. And then he continues from there.
So we've had extensive conversations with Bill and the engineer and taking that left-hand turn. We've received an easement from Bill. I'm not sure if that means he's completely comfortable with the project, but we have considered it and we've had, had those discussions.
David, this is Stuart.
Yep.
I had, I've had a few conversations with Bill about the whole thing and neither of us are convinced that the exit from the parking lot into a four-way intersection without the roundabout use of Exit 5 as it is now, I mean, Route 5 as it is now, will work at all. You're going to reduce that exit to one lane and expect people to come out of there into a left or a right situation. That is, is hard to do when there's traffic now. So neither of us are convinced that'll work. And he's actually looking at options on trying to route traffic out of that parking lot otherwise, otherwise at his own expense. It, it doesn't make any sense, that parking lot.
The parking lot itself, you would need to speak to the prior owner of that property who put the bank there and probably the access permit in and out of there. And what he needed to do was probably a part of that conversation. The fact that it's a one-way and you've got the bank teller didn't really have anything to do with the town, had a lot to do with the property and putting the bank there. And the state probably wanting to streamline traffic coming in and out of there. Taking a right out of the post office, I, I personally, I think will probably act much like it does now. Taking a left, I would agree, is probably going to be, depending on the time of day that you're trying to get out of there, seven to eight in the morning and four to five at night. You will most likely need to work with the person that is in the lane looking to continue on Route 5 coming through that intersection.
So Bill, Bill is concerned about it. And I don't know if he's comfortable coming forward with his concerns, but he is looking at a significant reduction in business due to this project. And I don't, I don't know if it's been identified as to exactly what that means. Because, you know, in the, in the last few months, it's been imperative to have his business there for us. And I would hate to see that impacted.
Stuart, I, I don't have a good answer for you, other than that it's been in the design stage for five years. And I am aware of Bill's concerns and we're at final design at this point. You know, I don't have, you know, I've heard Bill, I, I understand and I would agree, Bill probably doesn't want to participate in the public forum. But we have worked together and, you know, at this point, you know, it, I don't see going back on the design unless people wanted to vote another $75,000 for the project so we can redesign it.
Well, that kind of brings me to my next point is, is the, if you vote no in August, does that mean that we're paying a different way? And how does that impact the, the budget at that point? I think that your two points on your impact to taxpayers, is, is that result, is that not?
I'm not sure I caught the second question there.
So the, the question is, you put up some impact to the taxpayers. And one was the full bond issue and how that over time impacts the tax rate. And if you don't bond it, how that impacts the tax rate? And I noticed there's a $20 per average of $250,000 household impact. Is that the difference of voting yes in August or voting no in August?
So if you vote yes, it's an increase, if I recall, I can pull it up again, but it's an increase, I think, of $32.50. And that $32.50 to your tax rate would carry for 20 years. If you vote no and the project continues as scheduled and we pay back the $450,000 over a five-year period of time, on a $250,000 house, the tax increase was $50. So it's like a $15 differential more. So it's $50 more to your tax rate over that five-year period of time. But then that drops off after the fifth year. So for 50, for five years, you know, it's a, it's a $15 differential in your favor if you vote for the utilities for the five-year period of time.
But that's over a 20-year period. So, so you're going to be paying $36 a year over, over 20 years versus $50 for five years.
Correct.
So it's $250 versus, versus $720.
Thank you, John. I didn't, I didn't take the time to do that math.
So I think there are probably lots of different ways to communicate to the voters exactly how this will impact them. Total amount over the life of the project, total amount over the average tenure in a home, all of these different things. But how exactly those numbers are generated and used to convince voters to vote either yes or no is, I believe, a political decision for the advocates of one side or another. And not really something that we should be doing much here.
Dave, Dave pointed this out once already, but I'll do it one more time. Our municipal taxes represent about 20% of your bill. So you've got to multiply those numbers that John gave you by five to cover the school. And I would like to answer Stuart's question about the parking lot at Bee Gees just a little bit. I think about 20% of the traffic goes around the curve on that intersection. So if it all goes through the four-way stop, it's going to be like 20% more than what we're used to. So, and because of the reconfiguration, the stop line has moved closer to Billy's exit. And so anything he can do to move it further to the right and limit it to one lane is going to make it work a lot better. And if you sat there for five minutes and couldn't get out and turn left, I think you might have sense enough to turn right, turn around at the library or something. Surely there's a solution and it wouldn't be all that bad.
Many of the questions I see coming up on the chat are about the specific language in the warning. Dave, maybe could you tell us, instead of addressing each of those or before addressing each of those individually, could you tell us what the process of writing that warning is? Have, is there some statute we need to follow that specifies things are in a certain order? Or is the language pretty changeable by us as a board?
The answer is no, you can't just, you know, the board. I would leave it in the hands of the lawyer. He's also there to protect you for any challenges to the vote or as to making sure it was clear and concise. I did see why I didn't get that far on Matt Dunn's. You might be able to put in the actual number of grant revenue, but it's left. It is left as is because there is additional grant monies that could still come in. That is, you know, again, to err on the side of conservatism, we don't have in our pocket yet. So that's why that language is there. And so to put, you know, we've got 269, you know, and then plus, you know, anything that may or may not come in, you know, that sentence may be difficult. But that's one I think you can probably entertain. But I think that the lawyer felt strongly that, you know, that you have the project cost involved. And unless you want to borrow for that entire project cost, you know, you show them that result showing what the actual borrowed amount is going to be. And then he kind of uses legalist terms to, you know, utilizing, you know, basically saying you're going to borrow, but he utilizes the language that lawyer is speaking.
Dave?
The board is, yep.
I think that this meeting has gone on long enough and we ought to say five more minutes of discussion and then move on from the intersection. We're going round and round. It's not going to do a lot of good. I think we've got a lot of stuff to think about. It's been a very good discussion. And there's a lot, we can't absorb much more. So I'm going to make that kind of a ruling, those five more minutes and we're going to move on. Okay?
And is that five more minutes going to include the discussion of the proposal regarding information collection and dissemination?
Sure, if you bring it up, it is.
I would like to spend at least a couple of minutes on that to see if the board is interested in pursuing that option.
Hi, this is Mary. I want to just add my agreement to the people who have expressed their concern that the wording, wording of the warning is confusing. And it's confusing to me. I would have to read it again two or three times before I voted on it. I, and I, I question that it's written in stone and can't be flipped around. I, but you said, Dave, that the lawyer is wedded to that language?
No, I don't think I said he's wedded. I, I basically. I, I basically said that, um, and I haven't gotten down to Sarah's remark on flipping it.
Yeah.
I think that something is basic that might be possible.
Okay.
I think I agreed with, you know, the possibility of Matt Dunn saying, stick the, the grant money in there. However, the difficulty with that is, is that we are perhaps anticipating some that we don't have yet and won't know that until after the vote.
Right.
So it's essentially left as, you know, anticipating more grant money, um, you know, there. So, um, I can certainly speak with Paul and, you know, express some of the concerns and see if we can simplify that. Um, and, and I'll have a little bit more of an answer for you next meeting.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
Yep.
This is Sarah. Um, I would absolutely agree with Mary, what Mary has said. I think it is very important that the statement be correct legally so we don't run into problems. However, the people who are gonna read this are not lawyers. And I agree that you should start with the total estimated cost and explain that it's reduced by funds that have been awarded. And possibly, if you choose to, that another sixty-eight thousand, whatever it is, pending. And therefore, we are asking the town to vote as to whether or not to borrow the nine-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand. And end, uh, no, whatever it is, the one oh six one. Uh, whatever that lower number is, end on the lower number. I'm sure that can be done legally. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chuck Dunn, and one more final question. Just getting back to what Curtis brought up about having objective data. And I'm wondering, the spreadsheets that you showed, which were difficult to see because the screen wasn't large enough, could you make those spreadsheets available, like as a PDF, for those of us who are citizens so that we can go over that data and help us to understand, um, the both history and how we got to where we're at?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I guess, I, yes, the answer is, you know, it's a public document. Um, it was shown at, um, you know, at a meeting. Um, you know, I just would make sure that everybody knows, you know, that particular spreadsheet I put in, you know, the fifteen percents that I've got in there, et cetera. But, um, I, anybody who would request it would, sure.
Can I, can I go ahead and use that as a segue?
Yes, Phil, excuse me, Curtis. Um, I think we need to end the discussion on, um, the intersection and take a few minutes for your ideas of how to, uh, answer questions better and get the information out. So go ahead, try to keep, keep it short.
Yeah, I think it's really simple. Um, there are a lot of people who have questions. They've asked on the listserv to select people individually to Dave directly, either the phone, through email. Um, we've dealt with a lot of redundant questions and a lot of misinformation. And I think we could do, save everyone time and mental anguish by establishing a centralized forum whereby people can submit questions and concerns regarding both the bearing of the utilities and the underlying project. That centralized forum could have all of the questions and concerns collated and duplicates removed. And then the people in the town who have that information could provide it, and that could then be released again to a centralized location. So I ran this proposal by Dave. He suggested that I make a couple of changes about timing, which I did, and then I sent it to the members of the select board today. In effect, what this proposal would do is establish a dedicated email address and phone number for people to send or submit their questions and concerns regarding the project, both underlying and utilities at Three Corners. Uh, this phone number wouldn't be answered on a regular basis. Instead, it would just be set up to take messages. Someone, that someone being me, I'll volunteer it right now at the very beginning, unless someone else wants it, they can take it. Um, but someone would then read through all of the emails and all the, listen, well, you don't have to, if it's a Google Voice number, you don't actually have to listen to all of the messages because they get delivered in text anyway. And so then you can just read them and categorize them that way. Organize the questions thematically and, um, really remove any duplicates. And then this, uh, the list of questions, or I, I would anticipate that the email address and phone number could, would be set up this week and could be notified through the listserv, um, and office, or notices at both, both post offices and Mikes. So that would be the end of this week. That email address and phone number would stay active until two weeks before the public hearing. Um, and what day do you anticipate for that, uh, Dave, you told me?
So, um, I believe that we can, and it would make for convenience to have the public hearing at our August third select board meeting.
Okay, so we would have fourteen days before that meeting. Um, those, the number and email address would essentially stop receiving new things. I would take one day to remove all duplicates, organize the questions and concerns, and submit them to Dave. Dave then would have five days, um, to compile a response to those, the answers to those questions and responses to those concerns so that eight days before the public hearing, or so that seven days before the public hearing, um, a, either those responses themselves could be posted at both post offices and Mikes and sent on the listserv, or some way of accessing that centralized database with those answers and responses could be posted into those sites. So that's the whole thing. Phil, I think you're muted.
Thank you, I just clicked the wrong, at the wrong time. Uh, Curtis, I think this, this is a good idea. Thank you for offering to volunteer to do the collation and the sort of little bit of data scrubbing. Uh, the only thing I would add is I would hope people would identify themselves. And we would keep that so that, um, if Curtis and Phil ask this question, we know that we're responding, we're responding to. Uh, I, I would have to sort of think, you know, rely on, rely on others as well as Dave to think about the timing. And, um, and I think we can continue to brainstorm about distributing the results.
I think it's a great idea, Curtis. I'm glad you took this on. And I don't think anyone's gonna take it away from you.
As we know from experience with all kinds of, um, issues in town, getting information out is always the worst, worst, or the hardest part. So, uh, I'm quite impressed. I think that, that it might actually work. So, thank you, Curtis, for putting a lot of, uh, a lot of thought into it.
Right, and Gordon, uh, the work that Kira and Curtis had done with the mutual aid have, had, had the same foundation.
Yes, that's right.
A track worker.
Yeah, that's, that's what I remember. Yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna say we're done with the intersection for tonight.
So I'm gonna take that as a, I'm gonna start working on it?
I, I don't hear any, anything negative.
Awesome. Cool.
And so that leaves us with manager's notes. I think we probably covered most of them, but do you have any more things to say, Dave?
No, I think we've pretty well covered it all somewhere throughout the meeting.
Yeah, I thought so.
I wanna ask one question regarding manager's notes and, um, delinquent, delinquencies. Um, these four properties with the cumulative delinquency, are those sort of repeat offenders or new customers?
Um, one is new, and he himself totals close to fifty grand. Serious. The others, I think, is probably more than twenty-five combined. Um, the other three have been two are kind of new last year. This is their second year on it. And the fourth one has been a repeat.
So if I'm reading this correctly, if I'm reading between the lines on this, and maybe I'm overreading it, it seems like you're, you're thinking that those are the properties that are the highest targets for a delinquent tax sale, or?
So the, um, they, all four of those would go to tax sale. Um, you know, the, the one that's new just this year in, in February, just due to the amount, um, you know, we don't want that to go, you know, much longer. You know, you go two years and it's on a grand. So, um, there is some, you know, definite concern with that one. Um, and he would go and, um, you know, the other three are on there and would go just due to, you know, the fact that it's time. Um, you know, so those four would be on there, yes.
Curtis, uh, we have a, a history in, in town of being fairly lenient with delinquent taxpayers. And we've kind of, I think we've concluded that we're not doing anybody a service or a favor by doing that. It's getting, it's allowing them to get themselves into much worse difficulties. So this, it's a good thing to move on these things.
Uh, Dave, you included some correspondence about radar and automatic ticket generating radar stations. I've been a fan of the simple radar. I know we tried to reach out to the, our local Vtrans unit and they did not have one, uh, one for us to borrow. Um, are you expecting any action from us tonight on that? Or is it just an informational piece?
Uh, so you've kinda jumped, uh, to correspondence, um, so?
Just trying to get the, any moving along here.
So for conversation purposes, that came in from Theo Ambrose. Um, and I'm a little confused. So the original conversation, uh, just the, the things that you see, like the sheriff setup, was not what he was proposing. Um, he was proposing one that more like, hey, if you're on, uh, eighty, ninety-three going down to Boston, and you go through, you, you could have the choice of paying your toll or you zip through and electronically pay. If you zip through and you haven't paid, you know, there's a, there's a, or you're doing something wrong, there's a, there's a little like camera that gets your license plate and somehow administers, you know, your ticket. I'm not sure exactly how that happens. I asked that to Theo, but his intent was, was to have a unit that will get the person's, what, you know, essentially act as a law enforcement officer and, you know, would accumulate that data. So I asked him a few questions and he looked into it. And in, and in the responses, in, in the correspondence to that email chain that you have, there's a, there's a conversation for him saying, yeah, that, you know, once he looked into the cost and, and all that stuff, he's like, yeah, this is just way too expensive. But then he finishes by saying, well, if you lower it five miles per hour, I will go in for half of it. I did respond and say, half of which one are you talking about? Which, you know, piece of machinery? I didn't get an answer really, because my other conversation was is, you know, a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit is generally reserved for school zones and villages. And I got kind of a lengthy response on how good it would be to go at twenty-five miles per hour. I didn't really get a response as to what he would be willing to pay for, you know, if we were to lower it to twenty-five miles per hour. But it is a, you do this and I'll give you that. And I'm not sure exactly what we get.
And it's not even just as simple as lowering it to twenty-five. He also asks to narrow the marked vehicle lane at nine feet to enable walkers, bicycles, and other foot traffic to have a shoulder. So it's actually a pretty, a pretty big stipulation there.
Yeah, I think we would be lucky to lower it to thirty. We have to do a traffic study. It's somewhat expensive, um, can't just, it's a state aid road. We can't just do what we wanna do.
I do think you need to do the study to change the, change the traffic. Thirty-five, it's thirty-five now to twenty-five.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, but you're right, Dave. I, you don't see, you don't see twenty-five anywhere unless it's, uh, in Windsor or Woodstock where the town is in control of the, of the, and pays the bills. I don't think we can do that.
What about, this is John Bruno again. I know in Ludlow and a few other towns, as you approach the village, they just have a small, uh, a smaller type of post-mounted speed limit. I find, to be personally honest with you, I find those very helpful, to reminding you to slow down. It's not a ticketed thing, but it just is there to help you, to remind you to slow down. And I find it personally, um, effective and, um...
Uh, John, that's what we asked to borrow from the state. Not, not this, we asked to borrow a portable one to move it around. Um, and I agree with you that the psychological effect of saying that, oh, you're in a fifty-mile zone and you're going sixty or whatever your, whatever your numbers are, are very effective. So, um, I, I would be hoping that maybe we could reach out to our local Vtrans group and ask them if we can borrow their cart. And it is required that on that cart, beside the feedback, that you, the speed limit be posted, which is a simple, hopefully, decision.
I'm not thinking of the portable ones that are like on wheels. I'm actually, you know, seeing some that are maybe eighteen inches by twelve inches or eighteen by eighteen, and they're actually mounted on a, on a post. And they're permanent, it's a permanent installation, not a, not a temporary one, but...
So according to my read of the email that Theo sent, that's the type of unit he's proposing going half in on. Um, and costs, he estimated the cost at thirty-five hundred dollars as long as there exists already a pole from which to draw electricity.
So it's thirty-five hundred a pop, times how many do we need?
Well, that's if the pole with electricity already, they're, they're more expensive than that. I dealt with the Norwich has them. When I was in Norwich, I dealt with them over there. But they're more, you know, the, the mobile ones a little bit. But even that is still more than thirty-five hundred. But the post one is more like seventy-seven grand, seventy-five hundred.
Um, I'm guessing with this era of, uh, overbearing police that a, um, mechanical or electronic device where a big brother is watching over you and sending you bills would not be very popular.
And we certainly don't want to embrace the freshwater model of, uh, how many tickets per day do they have to?
Yeah, I just, I just don't think that's a very good idea.
Well, I think they just got rid of it too, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or, or at least they're gonna scale it way down.
I do wanna say, I do wanna say that, I don't know, I can't speak for Dave because he had to do the correspondence. But reading the correspondence, I do wanna say thank you to Theo for like taking an active interest in it and at least trying to find some stuff out and, and move the conversation along. I think I've had several people in North Heartland suggest to me that one of those signs that just tells you what your speed is for the North Heartland Village would be great. And I, I agree that the village here is walked pretty regularly and people just blow through it, especially right in front of the church. And so there might be other areas around town where we could identify something like that. Having a large and effective psychological effect, as Bill says, so. Not for now, but, you know, just do on.
So do we have any other things?
I will throw in my two cents that, um, the Energy Committee has been trying to put together a request to, uh, restripe lines, especially from four corners to three corners. lines, especially from Four Corners to Three Corners on the roads to allow a bit more of a lane for cyclists. I, I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but, but that's percolating through the energy committee at a pretty low priority, but it's there.
Yeah, or we'll have to find out what the rules are. Maybe, maybe like Theo says, a certain speed allows a narrower road, a narrower travel lane. Figure that out. Does anyone have anything else to bring up?
I wanted to ask about those flags in North Heartland.
Good one, Martha.
Given that we're not really doing much for the Fourth of July this year, I think it would be really nice time to have flags in North Heartland and maybe a couple in Four Corners.
Ooh, I vote for Four Corners.
Mary?
I want my first.
I vote for North Arlington too. This is Helen, how much do those things actually cost to get them up and, you know, make someone monitor and put the flags up and whatever? Because nobody's ever really discussed that and it can't seem that it's that much. You know, I think North Heartland feels like it's not really a part of us, so it would help.
You know, Helen, I don't have any answer for you on the cost. I was kind of waiting to hear a little more direction from the, the board on which way we wanted to go. I don't think we, you know, I don't, I would recommend, not recommend, you know, we kind of, I think we used broomsticks originally. I, I don't have a cost, Donnie. I think that it, that the bigger problem is just dedicating the man hours to, you know, putting up however many, you know, we're going to put up in North Heartland and Four Corners.
It has, it hasn't been all that many years since we put them up in Three Corners. I think Bill Barrows might have an idea of what kind of job it is and maybe even how much flags cost, I don't know.
So Dave, if I do correctly, oh, sorry, sorry.
Can we just look into the cost, Dave? Yeah, okay.
So that would be the monetary cost of the flags and the poles and also the man hour for installation initially and ongoing installation, Dave? Or what would that?
I can't tell you that sometimes, you know, it's a day's work just putting them up, you know, before Memorial Day. How long it's going to take to actually mount them to East Pole, like, you know, I can't say. It'll be, I'll get a general idea how long it took them to put up Three Corners.
Don't the Scouts do service projects anymore? Maybe they would be interested in doing it, whatever the highest level of the Boy Scouts is.
There are always Eagle Scout projects, whether that corresponds with the timing or not. This would be a good one.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
Maybe the American Legion could help provide the flags.
Woo-hoo, good idea.
Yeah.
They might get a discount on flags.
And maybe that would get us in the paper too.
I like not being in the paper.
Anything else?
For doing all that extra layout of the data and the numbers, it was very helpful.
Super helpful. Dave, that timeline was great. Thank you so much.
Get a chance to catch up a little sleep there, Mary? Sorry, I plugged out there for a little bit, you know, I took a little break and then came back.
It was, it was all good, Dave, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I guess a, two questions. One, do you know what happened when you sort of disconnected yourself so that we can avoid it next time? And, and, and then, and if it's a personal, so, so anything, don't answer it. And since the internet was out in most of town last week, does anyone really know why it was out?
Yes, I thought something was cut.
They cut a line on Lover's Lane and it, you know, like took off the whole half of New, of Heartland.
It was one of the companies working on the trees, a tree picking company that built a tree on the line, according to detail.
Lots of different options, but no one knows for sure. In severing, severing, it had to be a main trunk line, so that's, that was my, anyway, thank you.
So would we have avoided it if the lines were buried?
Horns buried deep enough.
It's all about how you bury them. Dave.
Thank you all so much.
Phil, I hit an X at the top here. I meant to close out of a window and I closed myself out of Teams completely.
Got you. And, and were able to get back in, or was that just a hassle or something?
Well, after like five minutes of talking and getting a phone number and an email and a text, I realized that I was talking to no one. I had to then figure out like, okay, you know, I was a little hesitant, but I just re-entered Teams. And then I was afraid I would have, I lost you all. But you were all still there, I just popped back in.
We're about to leave.
Just, it was really a virtual mirage, you know, kind of.
Dave, the, Dave, the background, your background with the cabinets is way better than just the lights on the ceiling.
Very professional, very fancy.
It's a good move.
Yes.
And Dave, you also left the desktop up right now, so it's been.
It doesn't really work because I've got like papers and stuff on a box as a desk. So I'm just kind of, you know, I'm kind of squeezed in like a two foot section here. It's not all that comfortable, but.
Has there been any, any of the updates from the state that's going to increase the probability of us being able to see each other in person anytime in the future?
So I did have somebody ask, I, something came out today. I know June 15th was going to be kind of a big, he's announced something, all I saw was he extended the emergency. I am expecting a, to be able to meet 50 or under at some point, maybe in July. You know, but at the end of the day, I think that the rules still apply. You're going to have to take a temperature, you're going to take, you know, you're going to wear a mask, you got to equally distance, you know, write down who attended, which we need to do anyways. You know, and then you've got 30 people in a room and, you know, ask yourself how smart that is. But at the end of the day, today, we can't, but I am expecting, you know, people are out there eating lunch and all kinds of good stuff. You know, I'm expecting at some point, but the, the guidance is still, if you can, you know, meet remotely, you should. And at the moment, it's still 25 or less. And if you're going to meet 25 or less, you got to do the certain protocols when you do it. So, you know, there's, you know, that's, that's the official guidance anyways.
Okay.
So are we done?
That's all I got.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, let's have a motion to reserve, adjourn.
I'll, I'll move to adjourn. Second the motion.
Okay, thank you very much, it was a good meeting. Thank, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, it's good to see you, stay safe.
Thanks to all our guests and citizens.
Bye.
Bye.
See you, Phil.
Hey, how'd you think it went?